Number five, board action to authorize up to $3,000 of county road maintenance funds to be spent raising seven manholes on Ellis Van Fleet Street in Apalachicola. FDOT does not allow utility improvements to be paid for out-of-state funds. Since the county did not notify the city of Apalachicola of this cost before it was incurred, I recommend the county absorb these costs out of its road maintenance funds. I have informed Mr. William Cox, City of Apalachicola, that in the future, the county will contact the city about utility costs. And if the city does not have the funds to improve, move, or repair its infrastructure in a paving project, then the county may be forced to drop the project as it is not the county's responsibility to pay for improvements to city-owned infrastructure. The need to notify utilities of infrastructure will apply to any state-funded road paving project, so both cities and East Point Water and Sewer will need to be notified in advance of any future road state-funded paving programs. The county finance department can fund this expenditure with board approval. The total cost was $7,000, and actually, we're splitting the cost with C.W. Roberts, because there's a little bit of air about who should've got a hold of the city of Apalachicola, and it was on the plans, but no one spoke to the city directly, so we're trying to...
Who we're supposed to get?
Well, you know, the city was sent a set of plans, but no one called the city to say, "Look, there are manholes here that gotta be raised." So, I mean, I don't know, but, I mean, we paved the project, we gotta fix the manholes now.
Okay, $7,000 out of the road department?
No, $3,000. It was...
$3,500?
Yeah, that's all we had to... We're splitting the cost.
There was $7,000, and it'd actually be $3,500, huh?
Well, we think it's gonna be $3,000 for us.
Okay. Okay.
Pleasure of the board.
So, may...
We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders. Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion cares.
Okay. Item number six, update on Island View Park. Mark Kerrington, Whitney Barfield, and I attended a site inspection for the Trust for Public Lands with various contractors at the Island View Park on Thursday, December 14th. The planting on the north side of US 98 is complete. While it does not look like much, there are some 6,000 native plants and grasses planted on the four acres on the north side. There is a temporary irrigation system in place to help the plants get established. While this property is county property, there will not be any substantial maintenance burden on the county, as the property is not to be mowed, or sprayed with herbicides, or managed in any way. The north side is supposed to grow up into a habitat of native plants. The south side of Island View is still under construction, with construction estimated to be completed by June of 2018. In related item, the Island View Park improvements are being paid for out of State of Florida Early Restoration Nerd Funds. To show how far behind the state is in completing the projects, there were intended to be early restoration, I use that in quotation, because it should've been done four years ago. The state has completed only two out of its 32 projects, and we have other projects in that same bundle, which are the Lombardi Project, the bathrooms on St. George Island. All of those are way, way, way behind schedule, and it's a little bit frustrating. It's possible, and I mentioned this to Commissioner Sanders the other day, that Island View might get some more funds, because it is now in its construction phase, and we're... The contractors are gonna consult with Mr. Phil Corm of FDEP, and maybe other projects who are so far behind aren't even gonna get done. The State of Florida has the ability to move things around, and so, we're just gonna see if we can get some other stuff done.
I don't know what other stuff could be done, but it needs to be done.
Well, I'll be honest with you, Commissioner, I'm hoping that they do... They allow us to do some pre-engineering on moving US 98.
Yeah.
And get the road moved forward, so that's what it looks like.
That's our hope.
That's our hope. I just have two more items if I can do it before we end up here. Update on alligator drive improvements. The FEMA environmental assessment are known, the EA, is still on schedule for completion in early 2018. I participated in a pre-construction call with FDEP in Dubear on December 14th to go to the proposed project. There could be substantial permitting issues involved with the state and federal government because of the need to push the road back south and reclaim part of the right-of-way, which is now in the Gulf of Mexico. The county cannot submit any documents to DEP for official review until the EA is completed, as we have to have assurance that FEMA is going to approve the design the county is proposing. But if, in fact, the proposed... But if, in fact, the project gets into the realm of federal permits, it is certainly possible that county will be forced to maintain the existing one-lane road through the entire 2018 hurricane season. I just want to mislead anybody. You may have a whole 'nother year out there of a one-lane road.
This is what we've told everybody.
I think that's gonna be a very real possibility. And the last item is Joe, and I forget Joe's last name, it's right behind me here from the ARPC, and he would like board support for a letter of support on an evaluation of the Apalachicola Bay for other living shoreline proposals. He's looking at one, or ARP is looking at one, but East Point Caribou is one we've talked about in general, and he's seeking funds from a coastal zone management federal entity to do an overview, just from GPS, it's not a construction, it's just an overview about potential sites in the Apalachicola Bay. And this came to Mr. Marone yesterday afternoon late, and so, he's here this morning, and so, what he's looking for, he can briefly give you an update, but just a letter of support for a study for potential sites for living shorelines. Mark, Joe?
And you'll just keep your holdman for the record, please. Thanks, Alan. I'm Joe Crozier. I'm the Environmental Program Manager at the Apalachicola Regional Planning Council. Some of the things I've done is I wrote the swim plan for the Apalachicola River for the Water Management District. I'm the coordinator for the Riparian County Stakeholder Coalition that you should be familiar with, and I'm the executive board for the ACFS stakeholders. So, this project is pretty simple. We're just gonna basically look at the whole Franklin County shoreline and Apalachicola Bay, and go up into the river a little bit, and that little sliver of Gulf County that's still in the bay, and to see where it would make the most sense to do future projects. So, it could be anything from covering up rip rap along the shoreline there, and putting some sand on it, and some seagrass, so it's a little bit more permanent, gives it a little bit of fisheries area, a little bit more resilient, helps protect the infrastructure. 70% of our fisheries have some point in their life when they're in seagrasses like that, so it would just help filter the water, make it more clear, give more habitat, and protect the infrastructure. So, we're just looking at where it would make the most sense for accessibility, whether that's public land, or just getting materials there, where it would make the most sense to last, where it'd be the most effective, and those kind of things. So, we basically just use the modeling that's available and create some more information based on the information that exists, and try to give you guys a good idea, if you wanna leverage funds later on, or if someone else wants to do it, where it would work and where we think it would be the most useful.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff, are you aware of the project that the estuary is doing, the living shoreline around there? You talking about something similar to what they're doing?
So, we probably are gonna end up finding that biggest area of need on 98, near East Point, where the wave action is really close to 98 there.
Have you seen the rough wave action down at Alligator Point lately?
Of course, hey, they're not gonna do any on the Gulf Shore, where we're talking about that.
Well, it's not... They don't wanna do the bay, they don't wanna do the Gulf.
But, yeah...
You won't have to worry about it too long, 'cause it will be on the bay.
The reserve is doing something around there, their section. We're talking about much further, well, 10 miles further east over there, where the US 98 is exposed, sort of the break between St. George Dog Island, that area there.
Yeah. That is a big break.
And we talked about the risks of oyster being harvested and that kind of stuff, and that's not necessarily anything that we need to...
And this is through the Apalachicola Planning Council? And at no cost for the county?
No.
All right.
The one question I had, so you're not talking about, you know, you can do several different ways of doing living shoreline, and the planning of oysters is not what you're talking about. You're talking about doing seagrasses and stuff to protect the highway from the erosion and the effects of erosion.
We're going to look and see what we think would make the most sense, and what would be the most feasible. If it is oysters, you know, we'd say oysters might make the most sense, but it isn't necessarily what we would do.
This is an overview.
And we're not gonna do anything.
You're just looking at sites, and then they'll come back to the board. If they actually get construction money for a particular site, and then we'll talk about the design. Right now, they're just trying to pick areas that would be suitable for a living shoreline.
I understand, but what I'm trying to do is make a point here.
Right, yes, sir.
And I had to do this with the estuary and their living shoreline. Is planting oysters there that are not fit for human consumption, and then one of my commercial harvesters says, "Well, there ain't many oysters in the bay," and then they start going and getting oysters off this living shoreline, and then selling those commercially, which could potentially be harmful to the consumer.
That's something that...
So, that's a big issue for me, and I wanna let you know that up front. So, as you're looking for particular sites and stuff, if there's gonna be any oysters contained within this living shoreline, then there has to be a monitoring program.
Sure.
Because people will go out there and get these oysters off this living shoreline and sell them for human consumption, they're not fit for that. I understand the nature of the oyster and what it does for water quality, I'm aware of that.
Sure.
But I'm also aware of the adverse effects of doing that, and you have to be aware of that, so I'm making you aware of that now. If you do anything with oysters, and there's not many oysters in the bay, and somebody says, "Well, there's some down here hanging on the edge of..." You know, we go down there and get those. Well, those... A lot of those oysters are containing stormwater runoff and effects of oil and grease off the highway, they're not fit for human consumption, I don't wanna get those, because the commercial industry is held to a standard, if there are so many sicknesses or deaths in the State of Florida, then we get more FDA regulations down on top of the whole industry. So, living shorelines, I'm very wary because of that point, so I wanna make you aware of that. I'm not opposed to you looking at different sites, and if you're planting seagrasses, that's fine. If you're gonna put a living shoreline, as I know it, with oysters for water quality, then there has to be a monitoring part of that.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Because if you don't, it ends up in... And you're making somebody sick with these oysters, and the whole commercial industry gets tagged for that. So, I wanna make you aware of that. Pleasure of the board.
One more question. Where do you get your funding from?
It's NOAA money. They give it to the DEP, who gives it to their Florida Coastal Management Program, who then spreads it around.
That's basically what the estuary is, same funding mechanism.
Yeah, and we talked to them, and I talked to Ricky, and I talked to the SMART group while we were working on this proposal, to make sure it worked out for everybody.
Motion, please.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
Just remind him of your comment.
I think he's got it. I think he's got it.
Joe, if you need a letter of support, then you need to write the letter up.
I already did. Just in case.
We do have a motion and second on the floor. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? The motion cares.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alan, is that the end of your report?
Yes, sir.
We need to move forward with one of the public hearing. We're a little bit behind, I apologize, but we're moving forward. This will be a public hearing on land use change and rezoning. State's Mr. Cliff Butler. Amy?
Okay. We have a rezoning and land use application. There's a consideration of a request for a land use change from residential to commercial, and a rezoning from R1 single-family residential to C2 commercial business on property described as Lot 2, Block 6, Unit 1, Lanark Village, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Cliff Butler, agent for Joseph Butler, 2006 Irrevocable Trust. It is... Here's an image of where it's located. I'm gonna make this a little smaller. At Heffernan Drive, it's between Heffernan Drive and Parker Avenue. There's a commercial... This is Zone C2 already, and then there's this parcel just to the south of it, that they're requesting to have it rezoned to C2 as well, and a land use from residential to commercial.
And there where your areas at now, is that residential?
It is. It is R1 single-family residential. It does fall under the S4 district, but it's R1.
Amy, you're saying that where that building's at, all the way back to this other road is all C2?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's John Haney. Approximately six months ago, I purchased two of the apartments that border the area described as wanting to be turned into commercial. In other words, mine is currently residential. And so, if you look at the far-right red arrow, you'll see several apartment complexes along there, two of which are mine, that I purchased from Joseph Butler six months ago. At time of purchase, this was not mentioned to me. So, if the commercial... If that is rezoned for commercial, then my property line will be approximately from me to you to the commercial portion. So, if the... If it is rezoned commercial, then whoever purchases the large piece of property are going to add that to the price of purchasing that big piece of property. And then, if they come in and build, let's say, storage units, which most of the front portion is, then I'll look out my front door and I walk right into a commercial building. And so, I'm opposed to it being rezoned, for that reason.
Okay.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Alan Nyhan. I'm a returning resident of Florida after 40 years. I own two units in the village. I just bought one a month ago. When I came back, I needed storage for some of my household belongings when I moved back this year, and Dave Butler found space, even though he didn't have space for me there, and he really solved a major problem for me. All the spaces currently are rented, so the people in the village, they're such small units, that when you move down here, if you sell your residence up north, where I am from Vermont, you bring a lot of stuff with you that you need to bring, and you need storage. So, Dave was extremely helpful to me, and the residents of the little village need that type of storage, and he was very kind to me and reasonable for the storage. My name is Alan Nyhan, I'm a resident of Florida.
Thank you for your comment.
Can I ask him a question?
Yes.
Where is your apartment in the village?
Okay, not next to there. I'm at the end of Pine East, 50-1 and 51-6.
Okay.
So, it's not in relationship to there, so I'm not butting against it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nice. The gentleman in the back, has your hand raised? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
I don't do this for a living. I'm Jim Chedister. I live in the village for... Since my mom moved here in 96, and I moved down here as retirement for seven months a year, and I live up on the front part where the golf course is. What I'm concerned about is the drainage. Right now, there's a ditch. When it rains, it fills that ditch up, and it rains down and goes underneath the road. If you rezoned this, and they put a bunch of stuff on it, or make it into a parking lot, or wherever they're gonna do with it, we have no control over that, but now, it's gonna be blocked, because they'll have to fill in the ditch. Because if you go there, it goes a ditch, and then it goes down, and then it comes back in. There's that residential section. And like Joe says, too, also, it's so close to those units right there, I would be objectionable if I had owned those, too. And it's next to the Chilis Hall. I don't know if we want a bunch of... Right next to the post office. It's... The post office is here, you got a little parking area, and then there's their property. If that was full of storage area, I don't know if that's good, too. So, there's some big problems there, I would think, that need to be investigated before we okay this.
My name is Jim Chester. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I have a question, Mr. Jim. The ditch you're referring to, is it a very deep ditch?
Yeah, it's pretty big. It's probably this wide, and it goes down. It starts from the west to the east of that hole, hole there is the ditch. Their hairs, their unit, they got storage units here, and then, if you walk out, and then you got the... You got a ditch that comes down where the water runs down from Oak Street down, comes down to Huffman and all that, runs into... That's part of the drainage. If we don't have a drainage, where's this water gonna go?
I guess the reason I'm asking is I just wanna make sure, 'cause this doesn't show that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I know they don't, and that's why I'm here, to...
I understand that. What I'm asking is to make sure if it's an actual ditch, like I have in front of my house, like a dugout ditch, or if it's just a...
No, no, it's actually a dugout ditch. It's been there for years. Ever since I've been down here, since 1996, and out here is... I've been here eleven years.
Mr. Jones? It is a ditch. It is a ditch that drains into the main drain in Lanark Village. A few years back, we had a drainage project that we did for the whole Lanark Village area, and this is a drainage ditch that the county used to maintain before the fence was put up. And it's been there for as long as I remember. So, yeah, it's... There's a drainage ditch, and it is a ditch.
And there's a ditch that runs right next to the complex itself on the side here, and it is one there, and then, right here, right off of Huffman, that runs down, and you got this big ditch, in case there's so much water, it can run into that ditch, and then it runs back out and goes down the road. And if we don't have that ditch, I'm afraid we're gonna have some flooding, and this man's units could be part of that.
Is it having a flooding problem already?
No. This keeps it...
The reason I'm asking is to make the distinction...
It has, in the past.
To make the distinction, you were saying that it has been maintained for, but it's not been maintained now for a while?
That's right.
Is it a flooding issue or not? I guess is what I'm...
It's still there, and it's usable, but it's... It does grow and die there.
When we did the drainage system through Lanark Village, it helped it a little bit, but if we have a high rainfall, it will affect that area, and it does flood out.
The trouble in Florida, I am from the north, it just pours so hard at one time, we get a heck of a lot of water, and then about an hour later, it's gone. And we need that area for that hard rain when it rains. So, I'm opposed to this sometimes.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Thank you for your comment, sir.
I am Cliff Butler. I submitted the application. I'm one of three co-trustees of the trust. My brother David back here can answer some questions, he's a co-trustee. My brother Joe Wheeler is also a trustee. Both of them have homes in that district. In fact, Joe Wheeler lives on Oak Street, but first of all, when this transaction, Mr. Haney mentioned, came up, I'm not involved with that transaction. Joe Wheeler and David were trustees of a different trust. I talked to my brother, and he assured me that there would be no problems with Mr. Haney. He was well aware of the property lines, and that property was not available for his use, so that should not be an issue. Also, there is setback requirement, so if we build on that property, we will have to honor the setback requirements. But also, the drainage issues. Let me walk over here for a minute. This finished project that y'all are talking about, the outlet right here, is high enough by land. The flooding problem's not up here, it's down here where our property floods. When water builds up, it's got to flood our property before it gets high enough to go in that drain. David, are you aware... Come up here, please.
Yes, sir.
Could you comment on the drainage issues here? Maybe, can you watch it?
Yeah, but I don't know how long it was since they put the stormwater collection system on Oak Street, but what I do know is that when they did it, they came down Heffernan and put in a grill, and the only reason that I know that they would do that is to take this water. Now, when that water gets to the property line between that 60-foot lot and where the Z1 property is, where the Chilis Hall property starts, where the post office is, there has not been a drainage problem with that blockage, if you wanna call it, on our property. When it reaches our property, whatever the water level is, coming from the east, from the county and the city property, it has to come under a culvert. And it's a low culvert, it's not high enough, but it can flow directly down there, and I have not heard of any complaint of the standing water being created by that ditch. And we've had people that have come out from the county, and they said, "If there's any water in the ditch, it would just be standing there." It's not a flow of water. Now, unless that drainage is not built to handle the water, that would be a problem. But I've talked to P&amp;Z, I've asked why do they put the drain there? And... Only 'cause Camp Warren Johnson probably put that drain in, 'cause that building was built during Camp Warren Johnson time. So, I don't see the drainage as being the issue. If anything, if we filled in those ditches where it really goes down and raised that culvert that goes under Heffernan, the water would flow into that drain, and we wouldn't have such deep ditches that may hold water for mosquitoes or whatever, although we know it has a sandy, you know, ditch, and, you know, it would soak in pretty quick. It does help the county flowers and stuff that are planted there, if it stays there longer. But that's... If there's any questions on the ditch, I mean, it was there for a purpose, but once we put the stormwater collection down the side, and they put that grate about, I don't know what it is, 40, 45 feet down, and we still have a drainage problem in our parking lot, 'cause we haven't ditched it to flow off into that, but we can solve our problem.
Well, and that's what I was saying earlier in the past, there has been a problem.
True.
But since we've put the stormwater drainage in there, it's not as big a problem. Now, I have saw the water coming down and just going all over Heffernan Street and everything over there at some point in time, and if it hadn't been for that ditch, it would've been real bad. But that's in the past years. And that's when the county... That's when the county maintained that ditch right there.
Right. And, you know, obviously, if we have high water, we have a tropical storm, you know, a lot of places have high water.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay? But it is not gonna impact any of the housing, because our property and other property is lower than what this property... I mean, we've owned that since 95, before 95. We've never had any, you know, any water in there, and since we've had that ditch and drainage collection, you know, we've had storms, so we hadn't had a problem. I took photographs of it when we had high water, and I went in and showed it to P&amp;Z to show them that it wasn't a... It wasn't an issue that wasn't already solved, and there has not been a complaint to P&amp;Z that I know of since then by any of the residents, you know, in the area. So, with that drainage, if that does answer any drainage questions, if you have any, I'll move on to the sidewalk, is where the S4 stops. And as you know, the property line is in the center of that walkway, which we found out the county doesn't own that as an easement, 'cause they couldn't repair the sidewalk.
Yeah.
There are houses from the S4 district that are within 30 feet, or 30 inches of that middle line, 30 inches. Our property goes, could go right in the middle of that sidewalk, and we do have a fence up between the post office and there. My father didn't include it down, because people walk down that road. But whether commercial or private property, that fence could be put in. We cannot build anything within 10 feet of that sidewalk. So, whatever we put up, you know, is going to not help, or, you know, it could hurt, but it's not gonna help. If the storage that we need continues, and if we put storage on that side, you would actually have a natural or commercial barrier. You could put a fence to cover it. People put fences up for privacy already. You could put a fence up, and those storage units aren't gonna be taller than what, 9, 10 feet? If it's residential, how high could somebody put it if we sell that lot as residential? And the village is already concerned with other R1 property that is next to the end units, in the block that they're in. And about two months ago, there was a rumor that they were gonna build a two-story structure, which would take away from the, you know, the ambiance of... 'Cause those roofs can't build... Cannot be built above the current roof line.
Roof line, yeah.
But it doesn't concern the R1. And it's spot zoning. It's got S4, R1, and then commercial, and that's the only commercial in the area.
It used to be a thriving thing out there, that new model.
You used to be able to go out and get good states.
Yeah.
But we've tried to put businesses in there, but they're not businesses that are viable. We have an umbrella policy for general liability, for slip and fall, that it required the tenants to get general liability, to include the thrift store, and we couldn't get that, and we even offered for the thrift store, if they would apply for it, we would reduce our rent, so that would still be a service, but...
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Butler a question? Let me ask you something, David. Since you... No reflection on you, Cliff, but David seems to know more. But, I mean, about this area. About this area.
Well, in fact... Well, in fact, Cliff was not involved in that income trust. Joe and I are trustees of that.
But let me ask you something, David. What is your plans for the property if the county does do the C2 zoning? What is the plans for it?
Storage. Unless this economy changed in some form, or we would need restaurants and whatever, it's storage. We just leased somebody to put a boat on there who lives on the other side of Parker. The boat storage is full right now and has eight boats on the waiting list. However, some of the current people may not renew, and that may take some of those eight on the waiting list off.
Well, and that... And I don't mean to harm, but I'm trying to get... I'm gonna be the deciding factor in this, I have a feeling, but...